The Tuesday, September 16th, 2014 meeting of the Riverbank Planning Commission is now open. May we have roll call, please?
Chair Stewart.
Here.
Vice Chair Hughes.
Here.
Commissioner McKinney.
Here.
Chair Dagely. And Commissioner Vilepottier.
I now ask if any planning commissioner or staff member who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled item to be considered to so state at this time? Thank you. Now we'll move to public comments. Now, no action can be taken, but at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. We ask that individual comments be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. And under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, we ask that you state your name and city of residence. No public comments? Okay, we'll move to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission unless otherwise requested by an individual planning commissioner. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a roll call vote. Included tonight is the posting of the agenda, the approval of the agenda, and approval of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, Item 2.0A, Item 2.0B, and Item 2.0C.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Aye, second.
Roll call, please.
Chair Stewart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Hughes.
Yes.
And Commissioner McKinney.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll now move to the public workshop on the draft downtown specific plan workshop. Mr. Anderson?
Ms. Madam Chairperson, this is our third workshop, Downtown Specific Plan. We haven't had any other emails, or phone calls, or written correspondence from anybody else on this plan. You'll recall that as part of our workshop in the last meeting, we pointed out that there were some AD properties, eight-zero, AD properties, that were, that would need to have a general plan, land use change, as a result of this, of this planning effort. Now, we'll have to go through, you know, the notification process again when the plan is finalized, and we're asking you, as the commission, and ultimately, as the city council, to take action on, on those general plan land use changes. But at least at this point, I think we're, we're in, we're in good shape, or at least there hasn't been, you know, a number of questions raised that we weren't able to effectively respond to. The other, the other thing is, and I disclosed this at the last Planning Commission meeting, we have had a meeting, staff has had a meeting with representatives from Sun Garden, Ganges, and they are currently looking at the latest version of the draft Downtown Specific Plan. And it's my understanding that they're to be, be providing written comments to us. I have not received those written comments. They did give us a laundry, a laundry list of questions and concerns. We responded to those. The commission got a copy of those as part of your last month's, last workshops discussion, so you kind of, you know, you kind of saw, you know, the issues, the areas of concern that they had. So there's been no communication since that time. So, and had there been any additional communication, I would've shared that with you. So, Janet, if you want to go through these slides here. All right, you got the pointer here, here we go. So again, you know, we got the, the plan's objectives, you know, the objectives and the roles of the specific plan, you know, haven't changed, or exactly what we've been talking about. Nothing really new there. Still talking about the small town character, community identity, choice and diversity, proved quality of life, you know, and land uses. Settings, one of the, one of the issues that came up at the last Planning Commission meeting was, you know, a little more detail, a little more discussion relative to the historic nature of some of the buildings in the downtown core area. And I took, I took time to talk with the former city manager, and also took time to look through what we have published, you know, as images of, of Riverbank that was put together by the Riverbank Historical Society, to determine exactly what we have. Unfortunately, we don't have a formal inventory of historic structures in Riverbank. What we do have is a published document that was put together by the Historical Society. So the idea will be that we'll do the best we can to fold in known identified sites and some language talking about those in the specific plan document itself. There still needs to be additional work done, and there needs to be an official, you know, historic site survey performed. And it's my understanding that there's at least one other structure in the downtown core area, which is the, which is the former, you know, First National Bank Building, which was built back in 1913, which could qualify for the National Register if the property owners feel it's appropriate to go through that process. But the inventory that staff would do as an implementing technique as part of the downtown specific plan would help assist them in filing the proper paperwork for National Register, should they choose. Again, that's a property owner's directive. There were some other properties that were identified, like the Dittman Apartments, the old Methodist Church, of course, the Del Rio Theater, the Calendar Building, which is, you know, the old Masonic Lodge. That's, that's another structure as well, so. And there might, you know, once you go through the, well, of course, the museum itself, the old Carnegie Library. So once you go through an official historic site survey, there might be some additional buildings added to that. I think the last workshop, we had individuals here that have a residence at the corner of Fourth and Topeka, and they were explaining the fact that that structure, they felt would, you know, had characteristics to be considered historic. So anyway, so that's some additional research beyond that which has been published by the, by the Historical Society that needs to be done in order to come up with a definable historic site survey. So we've got, we've got some things to work with, but obviously, some additional work that has to take place. So again, we got, we got some wonderful settings to work with, the downtown area. You know, we obviously have the SR 108 corridor that is, has different characteristics in the downtown area, and that, you know, the land use strategies in the downtown specific plan deal with it differently. We talked about the plan boundary. It was very clear to me after our workshop at the last meeting that the commission feels that this is the boundary that we need to pursue, and makes the most sense. We're picking up, you know, those entry properties along the SR 108 boundary. We're leaving the, the southern plan line at Patterson Road, and then we're excluding some of the other neighborhood areas, including Cardoza Middle School, which really don't have much opportunity for any additional change, other than residential development. So that's, I think I heard from the commission pretty loud and clear, let's quit, let's quit bouncing back and forth between those two plan boundaries. These are the districts. We talked about the districts that we're talking about. Again, the Highway Boulevard along SR 108, downtown core area, we've got Highway Boulevard, we've got Mixed Juice Neighborhood, and then, of course, the downtown neighborhood, which is primarily along Topeka, and then also some other properties along Stanislaus, you know, on the other side of the BNSF mainline, on the west side of BSF, BNSF mainline. Again, I talked about, you know, when the plan moves forward, properties whose general plan designation would need to change to conform with the strategies in the downtown specific plan, and these are the 83 properties that have been noticed, will continue to be noticed. You know, this is what the general plan shows now. For example, the properties primarily along Topeka, under our adopted general plan, are designated as high-density residential. Under the adjustments that I would think are important as part of this downtown specific plan adoption, we'd be converting those to medium-density residential. So that's significant. And by the way, that's pretty much consistent with the R2 zoning that these properties currently have. So that's, so that's a significant change that will come out of the ultimate adoption of the downtown specific plan. We went through the district zone classifications, and what, what does this mean? And then we go into, you know, what are the types of land uses that are allowed, setbacks, et cetera, within each one of those districts, those specific plan districts. Went through related documents, zoning and other codes, standards and specifications, talked about the certified EIR that's been completed, and then subsequent approvals in the process for that as we move forward. Talked about Ashington Street, what's there now, and then we talked about, you know, Patterson Road. Patterson Road is, is a very unique roadway segment because, over the years, the city has allowed development of various types to occur based on assumed right-of-way specifications. And I think it's been a frustration, quite frankly, of city and city staff for years. The ultimate right-of-way width for Patterson Road from Rozell all the way to Claus by the high school should be 80 feet, 80 foot of total right-of-way. In that 80 feet, we'd like to be able to get a bike path, 10-foot Class 1 bike path on the north side, the mandatory separations, at least two lanes of travel in each direction, and then a center continuous turn lane, and then a five-foot sidewalk on the south side. We are working and will be presenting to the city council a plan line concept for Patterson Road, and that'll be going to council probably in the next month or so, which keeps the bike path as an element, keeps the sidewalk as an element, and then unfortunately, because in some areas, we don't have 80 feet of right-of-way, and in some areas, we only have 55 feet of right-of-way, what happens with our roadway section is that we end up with as little as three lanes of travel. And because of the dominance of traffic, dominance of us being able to control traffic flowing in easterly direction, it's likely the east, eastern direction will have two lanes of travel, and west will have one lane of travel. But ultimately, we'd like to be able to get 80 feet, but quite frankly, because of homes and other physical improvements, we, we can't secure the additional right-of-way. We've had at least two different discussions with BNSF and Sierra Railroad. Quite frankly, we'd like to be able to use some of the right-of-way that they have, and in most cases, is about 100 foot of right-of-way, and they have basically told us, stay out of our right-of-way. So it's, so it's presented significant constraints to our ability to be able to get everything in all the lanes of travel that we need in a typical 80-foot of right-of-way. So we're doing the best we can, but the good news is that we're going to end up with a bike path on the north side, all the way from Rozell to the high school, and we're going to end up with a sidewalk all the way from Rozell to the high school. And right now, we have bits and pieces. It's not consistent. I wish I can, can tell you that we're going to also try to be able to come up with a long-term, you know, plan to clean up and to beautify the railroad grade, but at this point, doesn't sound like that's in the cards. You know, we're going to do the best we can, but the railroad's really not interested in us doing much with their right-of-way that they have, which is really too bad, which is really too bad. So, we're not going to give up, but at this point, this is what it looks, looks, what Patterson Road looks like it'll end up being at the end of the day. Maybe I should stop. Are there any, any questions on what we're doing with Patterson Road, or what we're suggesting to do with Patterson Road? It's not an easy solution. We've got, especially at the rail crossing at the main BNSF line, there's quite a bit, bit of switch equipment that's in the way, and we're not quite sure exactly how that's all going to take place and what the costs of that. One of the switch gears, we're told, is electronically controlled from the main tower in Oakland, and, and if we're going to have to move it, or if our improvement plans show that we're going to have to move it, that could be extremely costly. But we're moving in this direction. This is what we're trying to do. So we're trying to accomplish this to the best of our ability. So Patterson Road, you know, everybody pretty much knows what's going on with Patterson now. Is that it? Oh, what is this? This is just more, it's showing the right-of-way as it gets down to 75 feet, adjacent to Siligon. Again, you still have the bike lanes, still have the, the sidewalk, and then we're, you know, we've got the five lanes of travel, but as we get, you know, further to the east towards Terminal, you know, you'll see that our right-of-way width requirements is reducing from 80 to 75 to 65, and then it goes to 55 feet. But we're, but we're still getting the lanes of, you know, the bike path, sidewalk, and quite frankly, we may end up eliminating the parking lane here, which I'm sure is not going to be too popular for those folks that, that have homes along Patterson between Terminal and Tina. But that's one of the, one of the issues that we'll be discussing at council. And then this is the narrowest point that we have, and that's between Eighth Street and Tina. And then obviously, between Tina and Claus, we go back out to 80 feet. Okay, integral part of this plan has always been the, the, the concept of having a, a full-fledged vehicular underpass at Santa Fe, linking what could be new urban growth at the Cannery Site to the investment that's been made in the downtown Riverbank area. The original cost projected for this project was around 4.5 million, 4.6 million. The city of Merced has finished a similar project like this, and it cost over $8 million. So we're, we're planning for an $8 million cost, but quite frankly, because it's a large capital investment, we need to look at other alternatives. And looking at the function of this connection, it may not be necessary to have a full-fledged vehicular access point, and rather than doing that, maybe just making a pedestrian connection, and that pedestrian connection could be added at a much reduced cost of somewhere between 1.5 and $2 million. We're still doing some research on that, but fortunately for us, in this area of Stanislaus County, we've got some pedestrian overcrossing, overcrossing projects that have been, have been constructed recently. For example, the one on Sylvan Road at Rozell, right opposite Enox High School. And I think that was right around 1.8 million dollars. Meets ADA accessibility requirements, and certainly serves the need as providing connectivity between the downtown area and the new Cannery Project. And that's, and that's this illustration here. This is right out in front of Enox High School, and this is, this is Sylvan, and, you know, you have an ADA accessibility, you know, to the high school. Very important overpass, and it provides safe route for kids, you know, to the high school. So something like that is something that we might be able to do as an alternative to a full vehicular access point.
We went for the pedestrian overpass, would it also include a bike lane?
Yes. Yes, it'd be full-fledged ped and bike, and ADA, which means it's got to meet certain slow requirements. But I think in the end of the day, I mean, what we're going to present to council is, you know, both options. You know, commission makes a recommendation, and then move forward. I'm pretty sensitive to talking about this because there's folks that have been involved in this process from, from the very beginning, and it has always been a critical component of the plan, and that's the linkage of what could be new urban development, you know, promoted in the Cannery Project to the downtown area. And the idea is to, to not have this barrier of the BNSF mainline, you know, between new and old. You know, and especially since there's such a big investment in the downtown core area, you know, the businesses there, there are now, plus the businesses in the future, need to have, you know, as much connectivity as they possibly can to the existing community and what could be new community on the other side of the BNSF mainline.
So with the pedestrian crossing, that would, that would limit some access to just, that would be limiting some?
Right, it would be limiting. I mean, there's no question. You know, it's, you know, it wouldn't allow for vehicular access, but you're only talking about a couple blocks. You know, you're not talking, you know, a half a mile or more. It's not that, it's not that far. You know, I've, I've talked to the traffic consultants that worked on this plan, and they've assured me that we really don't have an east-west connection problem, we really have a north-south connection problem. I've talked with public safety, and their primary concern is not necessarily the area east-west between the Viaduct and Patterson, it's really between Patterson and Clarabelle. Because we don't have a connection between, you know, east-west between Patterson and Clarabelle. You know, with the Viaduct, you know, it, you know, it functions for emergency access points. So if Patterson Road, for, for an example, is, is occupied by some kind of train traffic, you know, they're able to use a Viaduct, you know? But certainly, the area between Patterson Road and Clarabelle, they really don't have that option. And you'll notice that that's where the major trail, train yard is. So there's not, you know, it's pretty wide at that point, you know, so it's very, very difficult to get some kind of a crossing down that area. So it's highly unlikely it's going to happen there. So, so this is, this is an option. So this is a workshop, so Dr. Zinner, I know, is in, in the audience, and he was a big participant in this downtown specific plan, so, I mean, by all means, you know, allow the public to talk any time, so that's up to you, Joan. But, so that's, that's kind of where we are. We've kind of come, I think, maybe full circle on the plan, and this is just a concept that ultimately, the city council, you know, is going to need to render a decision on, so.
Would anybody like to add to our conversation up here? If you're comfortable?
You should, you should come up, you should come up to the podium, I'm sorry. Just because it could be, it is recorded, Dr. Zinner. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Zinner, Dennis Zinner, I live in Riverbank, Patterson Road. Anyway, you know, there's a, the skate park is right there, so I can just envision 1,000 kids using the pedestrian thing coming down. And, and because it's ADA, you can't put speed bumps in, so I don't know. I think that, you have to figure that out, I think.
Coming down, you mean coming down from the walkway itself?
From the top of that, sure.
But the top is a...
I'll get it probably 100 miles an hour by the time they get down to the bottom.
Oh. Like that.
And that's a good point. That's, that's a very good point. And you're going to have, you're going to have that, you know, probably in an underpass condition as opposed to an overpass. I mean, either or. You know, I, I was suggesting an overpass because I know we've got something, a local example that we can share that meets ADA examples. But it is in close proximity to a skate park, no, no question about that. So there's going to have to be some design criteria, you know, developed to adhere to that somehow, some way. But I'd hate, I mean, I, I don't know, what, what do you think? I mean, there needs to, I think there needs to be some kind of connection. So what...
No skateboard sign, ventilators?
Yeah, well, that's, it's, you know, the way that works, it's kind of self-policing, right? I mean, you know, that, that whole facility is pretty much self-policed, but I think that's a good point. I mean, you know, how do you keep the skateboarders off it? Well, you know, how do they keep skateboarders off something like this, you know?
Is, is there a surface that we could put on it?
Probably, you can make, you can make service rougher. You can make service rougher.
Uncomfortable for...
Yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure. But I think the whole concept is, you know, trying to prevent, trying to promote connectivity, you know, between both sides, and not missing that opportunity. And I think that's what, that's what, you know, staff, and I think with the community, was trying to, you know, promote. But the thing is with the underpass, is there's such a, you know, at $8 million, or $10 million, or $12 million, I mean, it's such a capital, capital-intensive project, it's, it's likely that it's going to take a number of years to accumulate enough cash to be able to build that kind of a project. So what I'm trying to do is, what I'm trying to do is create something that can be built, you know, within our lifetime, you know, as opposed to something that gets, gets put off forever. And the other issue is, quite frankly, is that from the development perspective, you know, they're going to be concerned because they, they'll have significant right-of-way reservations that will be enforced on them in their site development, and them, meaning Sun, Sun Garden, Ganges folks, if we did a full-fledged underpass, because it would be significant. You would imagine, you've seen some of the prior documents, there's a lot of right-of-way that'd have to be reserved, when and if it's ever developed. And they've talked about, Cannery people have talked about interim uses, but the reality is, from a planning perspective, any interim use becomes a permanent use. So we can't really allow interim use of it, because then it's difficult, once it gets established, for us to say, oh, by the way, we have the funding for this, and now you can't do that use anymore, and we're going to, you know, we're going to construct this project. So there could be, there could be a lot of arguments, discussions regarding that. I can, I can see it. So anyway, this is an idea. It's an idea, it's a concept, obviously, it's something that needs to be vetted out. It's an alternative.
Cost-effective alternative?
Right.
And actually, I kind of like the idea, if it were not to be just strictly utilitarian, I think that with the right mindset, that you could actually make that a very pleasant experience, if it was, if it was nicely landscaped with planters and maybe resting benches, so that it could actually be kind of a pleasant thing to walk over that.
Yep. I haven't been on this one. I mean, I, I guess I need to get out, and I need to get out of my car, and I need to walk, walk this pedestrian overpass that's there. I mean, I, you know, you look at it on aerial view, and it looks fairly expansive, you know, I know...
I mean, like the Virginia Corridor, I mean, that's...
It's worked well.
It's functional, but it's also a very pleasant...
Yep.
...way to spend some time.
Yes, it is. It's worked well. Anyway, so, you know, we're here to answer questions that you or the public may have regarding this. Let me, let me, let me talk about where, where we would go from now, from here. I, I've got to spend some concentrated time, you know, probably a week or so of just going into the document and cleaning up some more areas, and I need to do that in, in a fashion that the folks in the community can track what changes I've made. And I, and I need to do, and I need to set that time aside now, so that document can be released and available, you know? So my idea is, you know, between now and the end of this month, that's finished, and it's available and released. I'm expecting comments back from Sun Garden, Ganges, in writing, which I haven't received. Once I get those, then I need to share them with everybody, including the public. And then, you know, I would hope we can get, I can get this back to the Planning Commission for consideration. September may be too soon. I'm just thinking out loud, September may be too soon. I mean, October, October may be too soon, see? I'm sorry, September. October may be too soon, so it's probably not going to be until November. Not going to be until November.
Before we move on, I want to ask, does anyone else have any comments that they would like to add tonight? Please come up.
You made a comment at the beginning about Ganges having the, the new version.
Name and, and address for the record, please.
Von Halbert. You made a comment at the beginning about Ganges having the new version to look at, and they were going to give you comments, but in your, in your staff report, it says that you still are working on the final version, the latest version of it, but they have the latest version?
No. They got the same version you have.
The red line, or the other?
Red line.
The red line, okay. The overpass. The Virginia Corridor is nice, but it didn't take out anybody's home. The overpass has a choice of the skate park or residential. Your EIR stated that was an overpass, you would have to widen First Street. That's residential. Are you prepared to do eminent domain, to take all those properties in order to put an underpass in? Is that amount going to be calculated into how much it's going to cost you? Is that amount going to be calculated into how much it's going to cost you? On one of those properties, I would like to know what the plan is. My neighborhood was chopped in half. It was divided without any EIR, any studies on it, something, it was divided, half of most was taken out, we were left in. We were told that, well, the rest of them was taken out because they had no plans to do any changes, any changes with the density or with the zoning or whatever. True. But then they hold us the same thing, but we're still in. We have no idea what your plans are for the rest of our residential neighborhood on Topeka. If you read this thing, we could be mixed juice. We could be, even your, we're R2 right now, and your thing that you have on the city code now do not match it. If you look at, at your plan right now and your regulations in that specific plan, you still allow live work. If you look at the definition of residential, which is allowed in R2, of course, because it is residential, it still allows live work. It still allows lofts on top of commercial buildings. It's residential. You've got all these plans for us, but you won't tell us which way you're going to go, what you're going to do with this. I keep getting told you're going to be pretty much the same way you are now. If that's true, then why are we still in this specific plan? We're residential the same as the rest of Topeka. Why were we divided? And like I said, if you're going to put that underpass in, what are you going to do with us? Are you going to take the state park? Are you going to take the residential? That stuff should be decided before you even vote on this stuff. It changes the whole EIR, because nobody looked at us when they looked at the EIR. Nobody looked at the impact of us.
So, so looking at downtown neighborhood, which is what Evelyn's district would be, at least those properties along Topeka, and based on the district zone regulations, what she's referring to is this list of uses, which would include live work, courtyard housing, row housing, and single-family detached. So she's talking about the live-work category as a permitted land use. Now what, now what the commission could do is they could not allow live work in downtown neighborhood, based on what Evelyn is suggesting, or make it as a conditional use. So there is, I mean, the slate's open. I mean, we can make whatever adjustments to this that we feel is appropriate, you know, to preserve the residential neighborhoods, which is what, you know, Evelyn's referring to.
There's another page of that that's not, that's not included here, which, where it says residential, and there's a definition of residential in that specific plan, which allows commercial in there, because it's never been reworded.
Well, it's designed, it's designed, is designed as residential, but also would allow things like lodging, and maybe that's not appropriate, you know? Civic and cultural, yes, but maybe we shouldn't be allowing lodging.
You need to look at the definition of residential in that specific plan. It allows more than what this thing is showing. That definition does not matter what this does. And then you need to go back to the first point and ask, why are we being chopped off when you have no plans to change us either?
Well...
If you do have plans to change us, we should know now, not later, when it's too late.
Okay, so, so what Evelyn's talking about is the fact that, you know, you, you got to draw a boundary around the plan at some point, you know, trying to create a geographically cohesive area that makes sense. And what I, what I, what I have suggested is eliminate, you know, this area, which is primarily westerly of Fourth Street, and the downtown core area obviously is at Third and Santa Fe, right? And then from there, it kind of radiates out, you know, more so on the west side of BNSF, because we have all this, you know, the old Cannery site that's available for redevelopment, you know? And, and that's a big part of this, this entire downtown specific plan effort. And then, of course, dealing with the SR 108 corridor and those uses along that corridor, and quite frankly, trying to, you know, get, you know, tap into that resource, that vehicular resource, and, and those customers, to get those folks in the downtown core area. So it's difficult, you know, to carve out, you know, Topeka from a geographic boundary that I've suggested here. So that's...
We've been told to think outside the box. Nobody said it has to be a square box. Nobody says...
It's not a square box.
Nobody says you have to have one specific plan so that the old can look like the new or vice versa. The Cannery site is one project. The downtown does not have to be new to complement the Cannery. The downtown is not old. It's historical. It's, it's the history of the city. You take it out and make it all new, you destroy our history, you destroy, you know, we're not Riverbank anymore. Who says we can't have a plan for the Cannery and a plan for the historical part? Who says we have to be the same? We have to do what the new flies others, they have to do what we do.
This, this does create a plan for those districts, including the Cannery district, that provides a greater level of policy direction relative to land uses in the downtown core area, that's a lot more specific than our general plan, and a lot more specific than our zoning ordinance, which was adopted in 1967.
Talking about the historical, the Masonic Hall, the, the bank building and the King Hotel, all the historical buildings down here. What about all the historical homes down here? And there are several on Topeka, from the Cannery down. But if we have to go into this plan and we have to be regulated by this plan, what happens to our historical homes? And there's, like you said, the city hasn't done, this city is the only city in this county that doesn't have anything in their ordinances and their codes to, to protect the historical part of the city, even though the general plan says they shall.
That's not true.
They've never done it.
Evelyn, that's not true.
The general plan does, this code doesn't.
There are, there are cities in this county that do not have historical site surveys.
They all have something in their code, their city code. The ones that are cities do.
That's not true.
I've looked them up, and I read every single one of them.
That's not true.
Which one do you want to see?
Series.
Okay.
Waterford.
But what do we do? My, my house is 70-plus, between 75, 80 years old. My house would qualify. There are other houses on, between the Cannery and Topeka, there's houses on the other side that would also qualify. What about our, our historical value to the city? You don't, the Cannery, the new part is not here to complement us, we're not here to complement them either. It's a whole, it's totally different. And the railroad track is not divide city. It's people's minds that divide the city.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, thank you. Any commissioners? Comments, suggestions for our workshop? Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Move on now to a public hearing. I'd like to have a motion continuing the Planning Commission rules and procedures be carried over to the next meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to continue item 4.1, resolution number 2014-010, to the October meeting.
October 21st?
October 21st.
Yes.
I second it.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hughes?
Yes.
And Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll move to item 4.2, a proposed moratorium on tattoo establishments.
Okay, Madam Chairperson, members of the commission, on page 79, you will see item 4.2, and this is a proposed moratorium to deal with tattoo establishments in the city of Riverbank. Currently, our zoning ordinance doesn't really deal with it as a land use. The idea behind, you know, this moratorium is to afford staff time to evaluate it, consider it, and come back to the commission, ultimately to the city council, with land use restrictions that deal with this type of use. There's two other areas that are new that we're going to be dealing with, that we'll be bringing back to the commission, not tonight, we'll be bringing back to the commission. One is dealing with vape, vapor bars or vapor parlors or, or, and/or hookah lounges. And the other is, and the other is electronic gaming, electronic gaming. So there's two other areas that we, we need to address somewhere in our zoning code that we'll be talking about. But tonight, we'd like the, the commission to take action on this item 4.2 relative to a proposed moratorium on tattoo establishments. So the, the staff report is fairly clear, goes through the summary, talks about, you know, the background, the legal, legal issues associated with it, analysis, environmental determination, public noticing requirements, and then, and then presents alternative actions that can be made, and there's three alternative actions. It's a motion to adopt the resolution, which goes to the city council, to adopt interim urgency ordinance, which gives us 45 days to review and establish, you know, land use restrictions associated with these types of uses. Another one is to grant approval of the resolution as, as modified by the commission, and of course, the last option is to reject the resolution. But in any event, we'd ask that you pick, pick option, pick option number one and adopt a resolution 2014-013, of which there is a copy, starting on page 84, of that resolution. And then Exhibit A talks about, you know, the ordinance, the interim ordinance relative to the moratorium and the types of, of, of uses we're, we're really talking about. Looking for the language in there. Talks about definitions of tattoo establishments. This is on page 87, and it includes tattoo establishments. Under paragraph two, it talks about body, body piercing area. Paragraph number three, scarification. Four, branding, and, and, should be five, not three. And five, permanent cosmetic facilities. So anyway, so this is being brought to you as a concern that's been expressed by city management, and we've got, you know, at least one tattoo establishment in town, obviously they'd be grandfathered in, but we've got a couple others that...
Two, don't we?
One, two. There, there are business licenses? We have two with business licenses, so they'd be grandfathered in. So it'd be any new ones beyond that they'd be talking about. I thought there was only one. Maybe there's two. Okay.
By State Martin, by Drew, by Carl's Jr., Cross Street.
Okay, okay, yeah, there's two. So, and so that's what I've got. It's my staff report. Any questions or comments?
So these other two will be grandfathered, these two will be grandfathered in, right?
Yes.
So what brought this about?
Um, hmm, well, there's, there's been a, a number of discussions at senior management staff level, some of which I can talk about, some of which I can't talk about. But let me, let's put it this way, there is significant, significant concern amongst city management regarding the operators of these, operators and clientele associated with these, these types of businesses, so.
But I see you, you have two existing ones.
Yep.
And it looks like it's going to be a moratorium, is that that will be the only two, or the two after that would have to be affected by different?
The, the purpose of the moratorium is to establish criteria upon which individuals could, be, these types of businesses could be allowed. That's, that's the purpose.
And we already have two.
Right now, right now, our ordinance code really doesn't address it.
But what do we do with the two that we already have?
They're considered lawful non-conforming uses. So they're allowed to exist as long as there's, you know, again, under their normal code, non-conforming provisions, as long as the use doesn't cease for a period of six months or longer, and it was allowed to continue. And if they want to expand, then they have to go through a conditional use permit, which would be presented to you.
Or if they sell, then...
It's fine.
Buy then attempt with it?
Yep, they can sell it. Yep.
And John, if I could just add, this, this ordinance is only, if the council does adopt it, it'll only last for 45 days, and then it expires unless we renew it, and then it can be renewed for, I think it's 10 months and 22 days. So either way, this moratorium won't last forever.
It's kind of timeout, really. It's really a timeout that we have these types of uses that are coming up, and our ordinance code doesn't really address it, so we don't have restrictions, we don't have, you know, the type of review authority that we think that we need over it. So that's, that's really what this is all about.
And you believe this 45-day moratorium is sufficient enough to address these, this issue?
Because I hear you said it is administrative.
I don't know if I can do it in 45 days, but that's the way that it's been drafted.
Right. Well, you're, you're required to pass the 45-day ordinance before you can extend it by 10 months. So if you can't do it in 45 days, then you...
So then what happens after 10 months?
After 10 months, then the moratorium, the ordinance is no longer effective.
So we send a president's, or are we just sending a warning?
It's not, it's not a punishment in any way, it's just a, a way to give the city time to establish regulations, so when you, when this, when they do have applications, they'll know what to do and what criteria to use. So it's not, it's not in any way meant to be a warning to anyone, it's just to give the city an opportunity to establish.
So at the end of the 10 months, the second moratorium, would it, just the city council could decide to pass a resolution not allowing that type of establishment in the city?
No, well, there are certain limitations. You can't prohibit tattoo parlors under the First Amendment because they're a form of expression. So the city can't permanently deny tattoo parlors, but the, the idea is that with, by the end of 10 months, we would have some sort of ordinance in place that would have criteria for established regulations to make sure that these businesses are operating under, you know, health code and are, are operating safely and with sanitation in mind and...
I, I think it's safe to say that there's enough focus on this matter that the city attorney's office is going to be working pretty diligently on new language, that the council, that the commission and council can consider. So it's, I mean, while I say I don't really have all that time to work on this, there are others that can, and I think the city attorney's office is going to be focused on getting something cranked out within that 45-day period. It may not be exactly within 45 days, but it's going to be pretty close. This is a public hearing.
Okay, I think I'll open the public hearing now. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak to this? Thank you all. Close the public hearing. Commissioners, are we ready for a motion, or...
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.2, resolution number 2014-013, a proposed moratorium on tattoo establishments.
Thank you.
I second it.
Thank you.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenney?
Yes.
Thank you.
New business? Mission items? County correspondents?
I, I, under county correspondence, I can relay to the commission that after the last planning commission meeting, I did officially respond to Stanislaus County planning relative to the proposed cell tower that is behind Morris Nursery, and shared with them pictures of a windmill that we'd like to see.
And what was the...
And I haven't received a response back, but, but I, over the weekend, I got a chance to share this issue with a couple of the residents that would be directly affected by it, and they were extremely pleased by our concern and our suggestions that we had given to the county on this. So we'll see what happens. No guarantees.
Okay, upcoming agenda items.
Well, the only thing, the only thing that I have for you... Well, the only thing, the only thing that I have for you, well, obviously, we're going to have the planning commission rules and procedures, and we'll have those in October. I don't know if I'll have the specific plan ready for your action by that time. I know the city manager wants it to be presented to you by that time. We'll see. And we'll see. If you've got questions or comments about the document, you know, please let me know, because I'm trying to do the best I can to address all, all the issues that I know about, including the issues that Evelyn Halbert keeps raising. I mean, I, I'm spending a lot of time to make sure that we're addressing her issues as well as others. So I'm not trying to ignore her. You know, my, my opinion is that she'd like to be out of the plan. I don't know how to cut her out of the plan. She's always been in the planning boundary of some sort. So it doesn't make really any sense to cut Topeka out of the plan. So I'm, I'm confident of that. So that's kind of the way that's going to go.
I would like to express my appreciation for the work that you did on the historic buildings. It's very important to us.
I'm going to throw, there's going to be language in the plan talking about that. I'm not ignoring it. I mean, that's, that's a big part of this. It's a big part of this. The, I am working on a couple map projects, which will be general plan changes, rezone, and mapping, and these are of properties that were previously, previously approved as maps, as subdivision maps, out in the Bruinville area. So these are lands that are on the east side of Riverbank, east of Claws, north of Patterson We have started working on the environmental on those, on those two projects, and they'll be coming to you probably in December or January, December or January. There's a lot, you know, there's work, there's review. It involves a general plan change, so it has to go to the Native Americans. There's a bunch of stuff that's got to be done before I can present it to you folks. So, but those are moving forward. And you got my, my report? Because I finished that yesterday, so hopefully you got that, so you see the full breadth of things that we're working on, not just the one or two items that you see in front of the planning commission. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that are happening, so. Housing element update's a big, big part of that. There are some commitments that were made as part of the last housing cycle that ultimately was adopted in '08, quite frankly, that I'm a little discouraged that didn't, these policies didn't get moved forward, but we're working on those now. So those will be coming forward, too. And I think I'm being told by my associate who's in the audience that those could be ready in October, but we'll see. Could be October, November, we'll see. So there's going to be some changes to help, help us as it relates to meeting our housing obligations and some of the policies that we set as part of the fourth cycle of the housing element update.
1200, is that what?
Oh, total number of units? It's in my notes there. I think that's it. You know, we need to plan for it, something like that. The Bosio Machado property, have I talked about that at all?
That's the property west of...
Oakdale Road.
Crossroads.
West of Oakdale Road. Okay, so across the street from Crossroads. I believe the city council next Tuesday, that's the 23rd, right? Next Tuesday? Next Tuesday will be considering an advance funding agreement to allow for the processing of a project, Crossroads to Crossroads West, Bosio Machado Herringfield property. It's about 400 acres. So it's land next to the sports complex, north of Morel, all the way south to Clarabelle, halfway between Oakdale and Coffee Road. So it's mixed use. It's commercial...
Wait, it's north of...
North of Clarabelle.
Okay.
Okay? Halfway between Coffee and Oakdale. So that's, that'd be the western line, and the eastern line is Oakdale Road, and the north line is the north MID lateral next to the sports complex, north of Morel Road.
So it's that heart of that, an entire piece along the other side of Oakdale Road?
Correct.
All the way up past Morel Road?
Yes, so it's the dairy, and it's the tulip farm, and the lands are around the sports complex.
And the sports complex, all the way...
Yep.
And, okay.
So that'll be the next, that'll be the next major project. That'll be a specific plan, EIR, you know, the whole bit, so. And that'll work its way through. It'll be probably about a two-year effort.
Okay, that's going to be commercial or residential?
All of it.
Mixed use?
It's mixed use. It's going to be commercial, multifamily, it's going to probably include an elementary, new elementary school site. It's going to include some high-density residential and some medium-density residential, and probably an expansion of the sports complex, hopefully, to take care of parking. We have a parking issue. Yeah. Yeah, so that's, 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 you know, a major effort that's going to be undertaken here fairly quickly. Now, I don't, I mean, I haven't seen the latest funding agreement, so I don't know if it's going to go to council on the 23rd or the first meeting in October, but I'm told that it's supposed to go for the, on the 23rd.
You had a meeting, I think you said something about a meeting in the last meeting we had. You said you was going to have a meeting with, with some developers or...
Well, I met with Son Gange, Son Garden Gange, and I shared with you the, the comments that they had submitted to me and the comments back that I gave to them. So I reported on how that meeting went, that they're, you know, they're going to take a look at the plan and then give us electronic comments back, which I have not received Is there something else, Anthony, on my list there you had a question about?
I think you pretty much, oh, what happened with the, we had, I guess we had the...
Yuri?
Yeah.
CUP? Yuri's CUP for an accessory structure in his backyard. You'll recall that matter was forwarded to the city council for consideration. The council ended up conducting the public hearing and remanding that matter back to the commission, giving very clear direction to the applicant, project proponent, that they were expecting him to redo, to reduce the size of the structure and to make sure the structure met the architectural integrity of the neighborhood.
The neighborhood, okay.
And at this point, we received nothing from the applicant. So we have sent a letter to the applicant letting them know that we actually, I think we gave them 60 days from the date that the city council took action to submit something to us, or we're going to consider their application, you know, null and void, which technically we can't do, but the reality is otherwise it just becomes an open file. We, they need to do something. Contact us, give us an email, give us some written correspondence, but there's been no, no communication since the city council meeting.
So you can't close it?
I'd like to close it, but the way that it stands right now, it's open. It's open.
Definitely.
Well, indefinitely, but again, I've written the letter, so, and if I, and if, and at the end of that 60 days, if I still don't have anything, I'll probably write another polite letter telling them, hey, look, we're considering this closed. If you want to pursue the matter, please let us know. Yeah, I'm trying to think if there's anything else going on. That's, that's pretty much it. That's all I've got.
I adjourned.
Okay.